We're live.
Welcome to the August, the April eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting of the West Claremont Local School Board. Mr. Ramona, could you take role, please?
Thank you. Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Delaney?
Present.
Mrs. Brinkman?
Present.
Mr. Patton?
Present.
And Mr. Chumley will be absent this evening.
Okay, thank you. We have a recommendation to withdraw to executive session for the purpose of considering the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, compensation, or of investigation of charges or complaints against a public employee and to discuss details relative to the security arrangements, emergency response protocols for the Board of Education. Looking for a motion?
So moved.
Mrs. Delaney, second?
I'll second.
Mr. Patton?
Any discussion?
Mr. Ramona?
Yep. Mrs. Delaney?
Yes.
Mr. Patton?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Brinkman?
Yes.
Four yes.
We will return after the executive session.
We're returning from executive session. Mr. Romano, could you take role, please?
Sure. Mr. Rudy.
Yes.
Mrs. Delaney.
Yes.
Mrs. Brinkman.
Present.
Mr. Patton.
Present.
All present?
Thank you. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I believe we have recognition this evening, Mrs. Adams.
We do. Let's go at the technology first, Mr. Priest. The men in blue in the back.
Yeah, they stand out in the crowd, that's for sure. Mr. President, Madam Vice President, members of the board, Mrs. Adams, Mr. Romano, thank you for giving me the opportunity to come here to recognize the hardest technology team I've ever had the privilege to work with, and that is no exaggeration. These folks come to work every day with a focus on keeping teachers teaching. That's our, that's our focus, is keeping teachers on plan A so that they can give the students their best. You'll have to pardon me, my, my notes went to sleep. This year alone, this team has worked to integrate many of our online digital systems with a brand-new student information system. They've carried out the implementation of multi-factor authentication to secure our accounts, both in the staff's Google Suite, plus our, our network infrastructure and all of our infrastructure pieces, remote access through our virtual private network. They replaced legacy antivirus software with an updated, state-of-the-art, modern endpoint detection response system that is far more responsive and protects our users better every day. They've internalized support of our video surveillance systems and our access controls, all of the door card readers and what have you, so we support all of that internally now, previously that was outsourced, so we can respond much more quickly and more cost-effectively to any of those, issues with those systems. They have completed the district's computer network update that has been planned and been executed over the past four years with the installation of the final switch at West Claremont Middle School this month, so that, that system is now up to date and the last legacy equipment has been replaced. We've upgraded all of our server operating systems so that they can take the latest security patches and keep those secure. They have enhanced our internal repair procedures, so they're maximizing our expenditures for spare parts by repairing far more in-house. We don't send anything out for repair, but now they're actually repairing devices at the component level as opposed to swapping boards that we were previously purchasing, so they've really minimized our spend on spare parts. And they, they distributed over 2,000 Chromebooks to students this year. That's becoming sort of an annual event, but they've also done all of this while closing over 3,600 work orders since the first of August. So, the team is, in no particular order, Mr. Andy I, who could not be here tonight, he had a, a previous engagement with his son. He is our Assistant Director of Technology. We have David Brentlinger, he's our Systems Administrator, Matt West, our Network Administrator, Connor Fields, he is a computer technician, Joseph Antiski, he is a computer technician, Adam Allen, who is also a computer technician, and Brett Wolfick, who is also a computer technician, Tulsi Correll is a computer technician in our repair center. He could not be here this evening, he, he has family duties, but he has been working in our repair center for the last about a year and a half and is doing amazing work there. These folks support the 9,000 users of this district, from students to staff to faculty to administrators and all throughout. So, I'm very pleased to, to present them to you tonight, and we really appreciate all of the work that they do.
Well, and let's not forget that in March 2020, we had one-to-one devices in sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade, ninth grade, was it in tenth then?
We were in 10th grade by then.
Okay. Across the district. And within, it was magical to me, but within a very short amount of time, this team ensured that there was a device in every household. Over time, we're now, we have one device for every student from kindergarten to 12th grade, so this team that was doing incredible work before has exponentially had responsibilities grow over the last couple of days.
Well, and I tried to focus on, on this school year.
Yeah.
But if we're going to talk about some of those efforts in the fall of 20, August of 20, we didn't get the devices we were supposed to get. So, we borrowed devices from districts and we bought some devices from districts, and these folks went through every one of those, put them through an 11-point check, repaired many, many broken units so that we had devices to put in kids' hands. And by, I want to say it was October 9th of 2020, we had a device in every student's hand, K through 12, because they worked outrageous hours, they pivoted at the last minute, they had already wired parts for these new equip, for this new equipment was supposed to come, and then it didn't, and they just turned on the dime.
They were on the phones, they were on the phones helping people, they were at the parking lots handing out devices, like the customer service, the above and beyond efforts to support people have been incredible. And you've had to keep iterating, like you haven't stayed the same for a minute.
That, that, that's absolutely true.
Keep evolving, keep evolving, keep evolving, and it's many of the same faces, and so that's just, it's a tribute to your leadership and the commitment that, that you guys have for our, our district. You know, technology's great until it's not working, and then you really, really matter.
Like in our last board meeting.
Right? So, I just want to, you know, join in a little bit here in thanking Larry as leader of the team and, and all of you for your, your great work, so, thank you.
Thank you.
When you think about the most talented and successful people across professions, they all have something in common. They have a coach. Jim Knight once said, "When teachers stop learning, so do students." I'm grateful to work in a district that sees the value of coaching. I'm also deeply inspired to work with talented, hard-working teachers who have embraced access to coaching.
Hello. It is my honor this evening to recognize a group of people who have made a significant impact on the teaching and learning of elementary buildings across the district this year. At the elementary level, we have Barb Kenny, who served as an instructional technology coach. We have math instructional coaches Beth Flanagan, Mindy Sabo, and Michelle Khan, and literacy instructional coaches Courtney Wallace, Susan Wire, Joe Stahl, and Jada Kennedy. These amazing professionals, and I think this is unique and special, they were full-time classroom teachers last year, and they had an incredible impact on their students, student outcomes academically and relationally within the classroom. They were the perfect people to move into an instructional coaching role this year as their drive to positively impact students and their families easily transitioned to supporting the students' families through supporting teachers. Our coaches meet with teachers where they are, and they provide a safe space for them to take risks on behalf of student learning. They help them create and reflect on student-centered learning experiences that provide deeper learning for all students. They bridge professional learning communities across buildings and grade levels and content areas. They provide an embedded approach to professional learning so that they can partner with them, listen, model lessons, support them, and work to refine learning opportunities across the district. With seven elementary buildings, they've been very instrumental in scaling the important work of aligning our, their work with the district strategic plan and the building's continuous improvement plans. I, I tried to like go back and look at all of the important information that's come from the building about how they feel the instructional coaches have impacted them this year, and I had emails almost weekly from somebody who said things like, "They're amazing. What an incredible job they're doing. They're beyond helpful. They have such wonderful ideas, always willing and eager." I love this one, "I'm learning so much, and so are my students. They're just awesome people and awesome educators. They're such a gift to us this year. Thank you so much for the opportunity to work with the coaches."
It is my distinct honor this evening to recognize our secondary instructional coaches, Angela Fallhaber, an ELA coach, Sarah Kaufman, an instructional technology coach. These hard-working teacher leaders play such a vital role in the progress we're able to make as a school district. Their strong understanding of effective pedagogy, their can-do spirit, and their high levels of emotional intelligence make everyone they come into contact with better. I'm grateful for the way they nurture the growth and development of our teachers, celebrating all the small and big wins while nudging staff as they work to be the best that they can be for our students. Our coaches understand that one of the best ways to take care of students is to take really good care of teachers, so they can take really good care of students and their learning. Also, I would be remiss if I didn't mention Mike Ross, an instructional coach that we contract with through Hamilton County ESC, and Amanda Graff, who while she's technically a teacher on special assignment, she makes data accessible and actionable for our teachers across grade levels and schools in this district. They're all action-oriented and responsive, they work well with administrators on continuous improvement efforts, they plan PD that models effective instruction, and above all else, they center the humanity of adults and students alike. We are all better human beings and professionals as a result of our time together, and if others could stand at this podium, I'm confident they would say the same. Thank you.
Well, and I have to add my two cents, you know. So, less than three of these individuals had ever been called instructional coaches before, and so what's interesting to me, I believe, is the fact that everyone has been able to just jump into these roles and add value from the start. That doesn't happen everywhere, like this is not natural, this is not normal. It is highly successful because of the quality of, of the people that you're seeing here tonight. Their relationships that, that they have with staff, how they honor what is good in our school district and, and help to grow that is, is incredible. They are constantly working side-by-side teachers, working for teachers, meeting with principals, and as they said, doing all this planning, and there has truly been an advancement of our district this year, thanks to these, this team. And it's, it's an incredible honor to have so many so excited, and, and the thing that encourages me the most when I've gotten to meet with them is that they inspire me so much and encourage me and keep me interested and engaged with this work in ways, because it's easy to get down, and they get that rubber meets the road kind of experience that really helps bring the importance of why we do what we do to life. So, I just want to thank them, and thank you for coming tonight so that we could honor you. So, stand up one more time so I can give you a round of applause. All right. Um, yeah, that's it.
Okay, move on to, uh, seven, the consent agenda. Try to ask for that.
Well, we have to adopt the agenda first.
Oh, yeah, I didn't see that, sorry. Looking for a motion to, to adopt the agenda?
I make a motion.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All the, oh, I mean, sorry. Mr. Romano?
Mr. Patton?
Yes.
Mrs. Delaney?
Yes.
Mrs. Brinkman?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Four yes? Six.
There are no speakers.
No speakers, okay. Consent agenda?
Good evening, members of the board, Mrs. Adams, Mr. Romano. In front of you is the personnel agenda for April 18th, 2022. On the agenda today, we have two retirements, Barb Gabeauer, she was on earlier, but we had to do some adjustments, but she has been with us for 25 years, and then a, a teacher at Summerside, and then Ron Ponce is a teacher at West Claremont High School, and he's given us 17 years, so we are, we thank him and wish him well in their future endeavors. We also have the resignation, or, yeah, the resignation of four teachers, Adidas Students, Payroll Coordinator. We have the proposed hiring of, of the middle school assistant principal, Ryan Fessler, four special education teachers, two custodians, and one of the treasurer's office personnel. We have the proposed approval for supplemental contracts for actual clubs, spring coaches, and upcoming fall coaches. And also included in this agenda is the requested unpaid leave of absences, the hiring of classified substitutes, and multiple school volunteers and student teachers. Finally, we have the proposed stipend list approval for teachers working on the extended learning program. This concludes the review of the personnel agenda submission for your consideration. Thank you.
Item 7.02 is the request for approval of the minutes. Those are the minutes for the March 21st, 2022 regular board meeting. Item 7.03 is a request for approval of the donations. There are five of them, and if I could read them, please. The first is from First Baptist Church of Glen Estee, donated 250 mini pies for the pie day to West Claremont High School staff. Withamsville Tabasco PTO donated $4,535 to the elementary principal fund from the city saver fundraiser. Nick Ayers donated 20 weight benches, 23 to 20, 23, 25-pound rubber plates, and 29 45-pound rubber plates to West Claremont High School Athletics. The West Claremont Boosters donated five posterior chain trolleys and four hex bar storage racks to West Claremont High School Athletics. And the following businesses made donations to the West Claremont School District for the community town halls, which by the way, the first one is this Thursday, April 21st, at Holly Hill, just as a promo for that. What they donated was Chick-fil-A donated 60 free sandwich coupons, La Rosa's Amelia donated 30 $10 gift cards, and RJ Cinemas donated 30 free movie coupons. So, again, that was item 7.03, request for approval of those donations. Item 7.04 is the financial statements, the bills paid list and the investments. Those were for the period ending March 31st, 2022. It would be the recommendation to approve the financial statements, bills paid list, and investments for that period. And so, the request on the consent agenda would be for items 7.01 through 7.04.
Okay, you've heard the recommendation. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Okay, Mrs. Delaney, a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Patton, any discussion? Okay. Mr. Romano?
Mrs. Delaney?
Yes.
Mr. Patton?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Brinkman?
Yes.
Four yes? Thank you.
Superintendent's business?
Sure. Mr. Overby is going to bring that first reading of policy.
Good evening. On tonight's agenda is item 8.01, the first reading of 11 policy revisions that include updates to our policies around employment of administrators, college credit plus, blended learning, use of medications, weapons, grant funds, cost principal spending, federal funds, procurement of federal funds, use of credit cards, and food services. These policy revisions are necessary to reflect current Ohio law to make consistent with other policies already adopted, new federal guidelines, especially with the use of our SFR funds and Ohio Supreme Court rulings, and also current district practice. The superintendent is not recommending for approval as this is the first reading of those policies. Questions?
Thank you. 8.02?
We have students here this evening. I know we're moving right along in the agenda.
Okay, I'm really excited. We have two students here to present to you this evening to tell you about our student town hall. I think student voice is one of the most underutilized resources in schools, and so I'm excited. I know you're passionate about elevating student voice as well, I'm excited for you to hear from them this evening, and I was going to ask about a clicker. Thank you. So, I'm going to invite Trinity Powell and Samantha Baskerville up to the podium.
Hi, everyone. My name is Trinity Powell. I'm 17 years old, and I'm a junior at West Claremont High School. As a child, I went to Willville Elementary, and thankfully, we have some of the best elementary schools in our district, and they gave me the best fundamentals to be able to do CCP and AP, as well as be able to get a 4.0 GPA as a high school student. On top of this, I'm also part of West Claremont Dance Ensemble, as well as volunteering for Key Club and National Honor Society.
Hello. My name is Samantha Baskerville. I am a sophomore at West Claremont High School. I'm 15, and I'm part of the National Honor Society as well, and I'm also in theater at my school. I'm participating in the musical this spring, and I did not go to elementary school here, but I did move here in the 7th grade and went to West Claremont Middle School.
Okay, I have to stop you, you have to tell us when your play, or your musical is, so we can all come, so do a little advertisement.
Uh, April 28th, 29th, and 30th, and May 1st.
And it's Mamma Mia.
It is Mamma Mia.
Mamma Mia, yes. So, everyone needs to come out for that.
Yes.
Sorry to get you off track, but that was an important little plug you needed to make there.
All right. So, what was this?
what these pictures meant and shared it with our group to share it with the whole entire meeting. With this, we made great personal connections with our peers, and we talked about experiences in school and how those compared. After this, we watched videos and read articles, and while we were doing that, they were giving us huge papers that we could write on about our ideas on how we could make our learning enhanced a little bit better.
So, the Student Town Hall was a really just fun, open, laid-back opportunity for us to share our opinions and experiences going to West Claremont High School and connect back to elementary and middle school days. It's really important to include students into the conversation when talking about how to improve our school and just things we can do to better the overall student experience. And it was just really open. We could talk about any experience we wanted to and just really think about how to improve the general school day for every student. So, something I think would improve the hall meeting was to engage more students in the conversation. Everyone that participated, we were all kind of in the same boat with our curriculars and extracurriculars. We were all overachievers with 4.0 GPAs and taking AP CCP classes, always. And it's important to have the voice of all kinds of students when talking about how to improve school for them. And I think a way to do that would be to have students fill out a Google form maybe during PAC, or to have an assembly of some sort where we could have students just have the floor to talk about their experiences there as well.
One thing I noticed when we were talking during this meeting was we all agreed on one thing. We all have different learning styles. The three I know for sure are visual, auditory, and kinesthetic. Me personally, as a kinesthetic learner, I feel that we don't have enough hands-on learning in schools. It's super important for students to be intrigued in what we're learning. Teachers need to spark curiosity in our minds so that we have questions and we want to learn. Without any source of curiosity, we won't truly learn what the teachers are teaching us. So, I feel like if we had a visual and auditory and a hands-on type of learning during each unit, students would be able to learn more than what they do now and overall have better grades throughout the whole school.
Another thing I wanted to introduce to the table was just creating future opportunities to learn about cultural and ethnic backgrounds. This is not a very diverse county or school district, and that could lead to unintentional racism towards all kinds of different minorities. I have experienced a handful of things, and I think that could be prevented if we had a class introduced, or again, utilizing that PAC time to have maybe a speaker come in. I know I'm in enrollment PAC, and we have college graduates come in and talk about their college experience and finances and stuff, because that's the PAC that I chose. And I think having people just talk about their experiences or having just a whole course or curriculum to teach about different cultures and ethnicities would be a great idea for a county with not much diversity.
All right. Now, I ask of all of you, do you have any questions?
Wow. You ladies are amazing.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, just, wow.
I was going to say, no question is all, a comment. Yeah, you guys did a great job.
All right, thank you so much.
Well, stay out for just a second, because I want to comment a little bit about the day. I always have to add my two cents and say it's today. There was one student at my table that I want to make sure I shared with the board, because it's just still, we all know this, but it's striking. The student was a freshman, and he said, "Mrs. Adams, I just want to go back to 7th grade." And I said, said, "Nobody ever." Like, nobody says they want to go back to 7th grade. And I said, "Well, tell me more." And he started talking about, he's like, "Well, I was in 7th grade during COVID, and so we like got popped out of school, and then I missed all my friends." He said, "8th grade was just kind of a blur. We were just," he's like, "I barely can remember it." He goes, "And now I'm a freshman, and they're trying to make me like decide everything about my life. I got to figure out what I'm going to be when I grow up, and it just feels like so much pressure." And so, I call that example out as just a reminder to everybody about this like gap in time of weirdness for all students, as they had to accelerate and launch into another phase of their, phase of their life without maybe some of the experiences or learning that they had along the way. And I just think it's easy to forget about it unless we're talking to you directly. And I just thought, you guys, you did a phenomenal job tonight, and you both are very articulate that day. Mr. Gephardt and Mrs. Otten and Mrs. Lawson really created a safe environment, and I felt like everybody told us what they, like, I don't feel like people are sugar coating things. Do you? What would you say? I thought it was really, really genuine, and I'm just really proud of you guys for coming tonight and being willing to share with our board. Our intention is to invite some of the students who participated to be a part of the Holly Hill event that we're having this week, and then we're going to have even more at Willoughby. And over time, what we hope to do is turn these town hall facilitations over to our students. And so, we're just going to kind of train them up and help them be a part of the process, because we won't get any better without, without you guys. So, thank you for being brave tonight and for giving us lots of great ideas.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, Dan's going to put, oh, thank you for doing that. Yeah, go on, you do that. Can you put this, is it my time stamp? Okay. Thank you, guys. Our, our students are so articulate, and, and I have to say, when you put yourselves out there for meetings like this, you just never know what you're going to get, and they're so respectful. Like, even when they told us hard things, you could tell, like, even in their face, they were trying so hard not to like hurt our feelings, and, you know, we wanted them to let it all out, but they were amazing. What you will see on this screen is a, the graphic that I've shared to show our engagement timeline over, over the course of the next couple of years, or weeks, months, I mean. And what Jeffrey has done is he has created this on our website. So, if you go to the Wolfpack Hub, there's a section called Town Hall, and when you go to it, you'll start to see over time little arrows pop up on those colorful graphics. And when you see those arrows, you'll be able to click on them and then go deeper. So, for instance, all the information that Mrs. Lawson collected at the Student Town Hall will eventually be curated, like, we'll type it all up and we'll share what was kind of presented and the ideas of the students on that day. So, you'll be able to, even if you're not in the room, you didn't see it, you'll be able to follow the details and, and kind of see our journey as we collect information from students, staff, our faculty, and our community members and families. So, just a reminder for everybody, the first town hall that's community-wide is going to be hosted at Holly Hill Elementary, thanks to Erin and her team. That'll be at 7 o'clock, and we have been getting RSVPs. We have about, I think it's, we're up to over 80 RSVPs for a town hall, and we can hold 100 people, so we're excited about that. We do have 30 volunteers who are also going to be a part of that event, so we're thankful to our staff who are willing to come out and help facilitate and host the tables. We did send out an email recently about what is a town hall. Our, our goal is for people to not see it as a sit-and-get where you come and they're just having information presented at you, and you don't really have a chance to respond. It's really going to be a blended experience. There will be an opportunity for some presentation, just to set some context for the, the evening. We have a emphasis on five key topics, the first being educational programming, the second being sta, staff safety and student, sorry, safety and wellness of our students and staff, facilities, transportation, and what we're calling district design and purpose. And so, those will be the, the topics, and there will be time for Q and A as well. So, the first one's at Holly Hill, and then an exact repeat performance will be hosted at Willoughby, thanks to Kevin Jones and his team, and so that'll be on May 3rd. So, we're not saying come out to both of those necessarily. You could pick one that works best in your schedule. We are going to stream that event live, so you could, if you're not able to make it, you'll be able to, you know, see a little bit of the action. And as I said, we will continue to, to collect our documents and put them on those spots on the website, so you can see it even if you're not there. We've had, the React survey that was sent out earlier in March has, has had some success. I would say we have about 250 or so, maybe a little bit over that, participants so far. We'd really like to see more people. We're going to keep that open for a really long time, because we're, we're using what we're learning from that event to shape what happens this week and on May 3rd. And then, following that event, we will create another opportunity. And so, I know people may be skeptical about, what are they going to do with all this? Or, you know, what, do they really even listen? Well, the answer is yes, we really, really do. And so, the more information and the more data we have to chew on as a community and to kind of process, I think the better decisions we'll come up with. And this is an engagement process that, as you can see, continues into next year. So, our town halls will be wrapped up in early spring. I'll continue to do focus groups and small one-on-one groups, listening sessions, just to get under the hood, go a little bit deeper. We'll keep the board updated over the summer, and then we'll rally toward a September town hall, where all the data that we gathered over the summer will be used to con take the big ideas that I've shared and just keep narrowing them down, narrowing the focus, and seeing kind of where people are leaning and what they want to see in their school system. So, it's a very robust process. It's going to be very involved, and we just, we are just begging and pleading that people take us up on the offer to have a seat at the table and to participate in the virtual options. So, that's just, that's all I have. You guys have any questions?
Thank you. Treasurers' business?
So, just real quickly, just an update for March that I want to do. Real quickly, so as you know, every month we do a comparison of the, the current month to the most recent five-year forecast, which was back in November of '21. We did receive our real estate tax settlements in March. Those settlements, and that, that's all that we typically receive through the end of the year, is what we received through March. We're at 100% of that, so that was on target. On the tuition, we're actually ahead of target. That really still has to do with the change in the fair school funding plan on how we receive that. The abatement, we're still due one payment from Union Township and Pierce Township, but that is on track for us for this fiscal year. The State Foundation, we're, we should be at 75%. We're a little bit over currently, so we will see a little bit of a gain from the fair school funding plan that is there. We do have one more receipt due to us for the casino tax. That's there, the casino distribution. So, in all, we are through the end of March, where if we just kind of prorate things, we should be at 75%, but the way we receive our revenues, we are in fact, about 92% of the way there through the end of March with that. On the expense side, our salaries and benefits are tracking right on par. You'll note that the supplies and purchase services are, seem to be exceeding what we, we expected, but our equipment account is below. Those three items are, or those three areas are areas where we do make a budget adjustment towards the end of the year. As we do that, as you'll recall, last spring, I said that, just keep in mind that because of the relief money that we receive, we just need some flexibility in how we do things. I'm confident, though, that with adjustments that we make before June 30th, in fact, we'll come back with an appropriation amendment in May, that things will be in line with that. We won't exceed the current budget that we have for those. Expect in May, that this coming May, we have the update on the five-year forecast, so that will be presented. We will also then, in May, give an update on the budget for the FY '23 year, so the year beginning July 1st. That's really leading to adopting the appropriation measure in June for that next fiscal year as we do so. Also want to give an update, I did attend our annual Ohio Association of School Business officials, and I think the big takeaway that I took from that, although there was concerted effort on the fair school funding plan to make sure that that stays intact and that does get fully funded, I did note that there was discussion that, you know, there are some districts like ours where there needs to be some, some adjustments. And I say that to the fact that if the state is going to put funding into that fair school funding plan, which is for K-12 public education, that, you know, there are districts like ours that probably need a little bit more put into them. So, if the state average is going to be 10 to 15%, then districts like ours, that may only be, you know, a 2% or 3% increase, that means other districts are higher than the 10 to 15%. There just needs to be some tweaking of that formula so that, you know, we get our fair share too. It does look like that formula put more pressure on our local funding, and I think we just need to do a little bit of gentle pushback so that we can get a little bit more state funding, you know, to offset that. So, but I was glad to see that, that it was a little bit more open to some of those discussions than there was in the past before that vote was passed. So, that is a positive move on that part. Questions?
I had a question on page seven. You have listed wages, benefits, purchase services, supplies, equipment, and other. What, what would fall into that other category?
So, the other, that is for the, the fees that the auditor and treasurers collect, the advertising of the delinquencies, the property insurances are included in there, and just other miscellaneous. But the big ones are the auditor and treasurer's fees and the insurances. The property, the insurances are for the property and liability.
So, that has us a little bit above budget on those items?
That, the, the, the other would be, I think that's kind of close right on track, it should be.
Okay.
The supplies and materials and the purchase services appear to be high, but there's some adjustments that really need to be made with the equipment, and then also with the relief funds.
Got it.
And then Fund 034 and the maintenance fund.
Gotcha. The graph that I'm looking at looks like it's a little bit above budget, which is why I was asking.
Yeah, it, it is above, and by the end of the year, they will be below.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. 10.01 Board Policy Committee hearing, our committee meeting report?
We met last week with Mr. Overby, Mr. Patton and I did. We reviewed the policies that you received for first reading, just basic overall, you know, changes from NEOL, you know, taking out names, making them generalized, so that, you know, if there's, you know, turnover in the district, that we don't have to continue removing things. There were actually two policies that we both had some questions about and, and information that we are familiar with, with our, with our profession, so Mr. Overby took those back and got, got information back to us, so we're going to be able to give a little, put a little more meat in those policies. But otherwise, yes, so enjoy reading and let us know if you have any questions.
Any other discussion? Board comments. Mrs. Brinkman?
I don't.
Okay. Mr. Patton?
Again, I'd like to just thank the, the two groups that we recognized today. Again, they were very instrumental in keeping us up and running, and so I do appreciate all that they have done. We've, keep saying it, and I'll continue to say it, we've got the town hall meeting coming up Thursday. I do encourage anyone that can come and join us to come and join us. This is your district as well, and just so you can get a firsthand knowledge as to what we're doing and the direction that we're going as a district. So, again, that's the 21st, this Thursday, at 7:00 PM at Holly Hill. And then, the two students that came out, again, I commend you guys as well. You guys did an excellent job standing up and giving presentations. I do presentations all the time, and I still get nervous when I'm speaking in front of the public, and so you guys did a great job. And I actually encourage And I actually encourage whoever orchestrated that to continue to do those and to reach out to all different groups of our students, because we do have all different students, and they all take different paths in how they get there. So I do like that. So I do appreciate you guys standing in front of us today, okay? Thank you, guys.
Mrs. Delaney?
Again, kudos to our groups that we recognized, the IT department. Every great company has a great IT department behind them that is always picking up the pieces, and if something doesn't work, they're the first ones, you know, they're up early, sometimes never go to bed. So we wouldn't be able to do what we did over the last few years without those people. Our district coaches, our district coaches are coaches because they were phenomenal educators, and they're just continuing to do what they do best. I think it's amazing that we're able to give back to our teachers just in another dimension to give to, continue giving to our students, because, you know, at some point, you do kind of stop learning because you get in that, you know, that grind, and this is giving them that extra they need. Trinity and Samantha, applause to you both. You were very articulate. The insight that you brought from that whole day was amazing. I felt like I was in the room with you. I kind of wish I was, because I'm a geek like that, and I like to hear all that stuff. You have some great ideas, and I'm sure Mrs. Adams is going to be absorbing all of that into her Phase Two of what, how to make West Claremont a better place. The React surveys and the town halls. I put a plea out on the West Claremont Parent Page this weekend to get people to take those surveys. West Claremont is not the district that we've been in the last twenty years. I've been here, and it, this is the real deal. I mean, we're not asking because we're just giving lip service. We want to know, and the only way that you're going to get heard is to respond to these surveys. Complaining on social media is not going to get us where we need to be. We want to collect information. I know people are concerned about anonymity. Don't be afraid to speak up, because every comment, positive or negative, is great information for us to capture to make West Claremont a better place. So please, engage. We are taking it seriously. I hope everybody had a great Eastern, enjoyed the nice weather yesterday, and now that we're in the Arctic thirties again.
Okay, Samantha and Trinity, I want to thank you for your presentation. I'm a high school teacher, and I'm all about student leadership. You did a great job. Samantha, I go way back with Jenny and the boys. Nice to see you here. I've heard a lot of great things about you. Over my spring break, which I think was three weeks ago, Mrs. Adams and I, excuse you, at my request, took a tour of the district. I was astounded at so many great things going on. I didn't see anything bad throughout the district, other than some of our building problems, being too small, et cetera. But administrators, teachers, and support staff are working really, really hard. The kids are wonderful. When I saw the kindergartners going right out in the computer, I loved it. Of course, with being with the big kids all the time, I get to see that. It was a great experience. Finally, the CAC, the Citizens Advisory Committee, will be bringing their recommendation to the board on May ninth concerning middle school start time. So we'll have a presentation that night. Thank you. We are going to go back into executive session for a short one. Recommendation to withdraw to executive session for the purpose of considering appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, compensation of or investigation of charges or complaints against a public employee. I'm looking for recommendation.
Subtle.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
Mr. Patton? Discussion? Thank you. Thank you all. And...
I'll vote, sorry.
Okay. Jumping ahead.
Mrs. Delaney?
Yes.
Mr. Patton?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Brinkman?
Yes.
Four yes. Go ahead.
We won't be coming back.
We won't be coming back.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you all for attending this evening.